Call me the order, please write your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska government body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. Any citizen may address the council regarding items included on the meeting agenda and are asked to complete and hand in a speaker card to the clerk. Presenter shall approach the podium, state the name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The citizen reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the rule. Taylor, Colterman, Streisand, Tanyas, Singleton, Borgan, Francis Cato. We have a court president. Alright, thank you. First six items make up this evening's consent agenda.
I meant the consent agenda.
The motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cato, Taylor, Tanyas, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Borgan, 7-0.
Alright, public hearing this evening is consideration of an ordinance to revise the city's Unified Land Development Ordinance, ULDO, Article 3, Use Types 410-3.7 Commercial Uses, 410 Attachment 1 Use Matrix, and Article 31 Supplemental Use Regulations. Welcome, Tim.
Evening, Council Mayor. We were approached by Mr. Steve Helmandollar, who is present this evening, who wants to move a business to the city of Seward in the old Montag business, or old Montag building, south of town by the airport. His business is aviation repair and maintenance. It's in a C2 zoning district, so he wanted to make sure it was an approved use in that zoning district. Well, lo and behold, we went to look at it, and we have nothing for aviation around the airport. And much like auto body or auto repair, we decided we should probably put something together to kind of regulate what happens around the airport. So, we went, we did, we went out, did some research, and we created Aviation Maintenance Repair Definition, which is in your pamphlet there, or in your packet there, under the Use Types. And then we went under Supplemental Use and defined some items that are going to kind of regulate this business. You'll see that we don't want the aircraft under its own power leaving the airport, so it's going to be trailerd or tug. They have to enter their facility from the airport side of the maintenance facility. And the reason for that is, the hope is that the access from the airport will be to the back of that building and not come out around onto the highway. They will leave no aircraft outdoors after the hour of operation, and the facility must be within a thousand feet of the airport property. With that, in the Use Matrix, we created an Aviation Maintenance Repair Line. And to regulate these new uses and the supplemental use, we thought it was best to make this a conditional use permit. We do have other C2 zoning within the city, and so we wanted to make sure we had control that this use stays on the surrounding property of the airport. With that, Planning Commission saw no concerns and recommended it 5-0.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions or comments from the council? There's a public hearing, so we'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. And from the public wish to speak on this item, please come forward at this time.
Well, sir.
You can fill it out later if you want.
Alright, no good deal. And I need to state my name and address, Dave, before I speak. Yep, my name is Steve Helmandollar. My address is 1600 North 212th Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 68022. Sorry, I got a little crick in my throat tonight for some reason. G'day, evening Mayor and members of the Seward County Council. My name is Steve Helmandollar, I'm the owner of Kill Devil Aviation. I'm here tonight to speak in support of proposal of the amendment to Chapter 410-3.7 of Seward County Municipal Code, which would add aviation maintenance under that commercial zoning use. The meeting began by telling a little bit about myself and a little bit about my company. Kill Devil Aviation is a startup company focused on aviation, specifically targeting the emerging U860 civilian use of the Blackhawk. So, I bring over 34 years of experience working on the Blackhawk. I've gained that experience through the US Army, mostly in the National Guard, as a maintenance test pilot and also managing maintenance for Blackhawks. There are many skilled veterans living in the Seward area, in the Lincoln area, that have extensive expertise working on the Blackhawk. But the, but there's current lack of opportunities to work on the Blackhawk in the speed world. So, my vision is to tap into this valuable resource, underutilized talent pool, and to build a rotorcraft maintenance hub here in the city of Seward at the Seward Airport. So, to begin my journey, one of the visions was first of all, obviously coming up with the idea of getting people to buy in with it. But the biggest thing is a facility to do the maintenance in. So, I need a suitable facility. So, I started looking around at a hangar. So, obviously I want to be on the airfield. Hangars right now are at a premium. I know you guys just built some hangars here, that you will probably have a problem filling those. It's even harder to find a commercial hangar large enough to do U860 maintenance in that's available. Because there's none available. There's none available in Lincoln, there's none available in Seward. And basically, that was the footprint of what I was looking for. And I'll go into that a little bit more later. So, while I was looking for this, lo and behold, found a facility that was suitable. It just wasn't on the airpark. So, it was the Montag Building, I think it's 1253 280th Road. And it meets most of my requirements. Biggest requirement is it's got a door big enough for me to get a Blackhawk in. And once it's in there, I can actually put the blades on it, and I can turn the blades inside there. So, it meets the requirement for what I need to be done. However, there is a regulatory hurdle that we've got to overcome. Tim just mentioned it. So, the building, you know, it falls underneath your commercial municipal code. It doesn't allow aviation maintenance. Obviously, this amendment today would fill that gap. It's also important to note that aviation maintenance, even though it's aviation, it's not much different than what is already allowed by the code. It's already allows maintenance on agricultural products, vehicles, heavy equipment. Similar, the maintenance is very, very similar. More detailed, obviously, in scope. And if you use true-up, the repercussions can be a little more critical, let's say. So, but those are the biggest differences. But maintenance across the board is pretty much similar. Let's see here. Okay, so we do have some challenges. Obviously, this is one of the first challenges we have. The second challenge is moving the aircraft from the airfield to the Montag Building. So, there's two ways that we can get aircraft to the Montag Building. The first is the simplest. I've already talked to some people looking for maintenance to be done, that they would truck the aircraft in. It's, it's just all about economics. If it's cheaper to fly it, they'll fly it. If it's cheaper to send it in on a truck, they'll send it in on a truck. If it comes via truck, easy peasy. We just pull it up to the facility, we unload it, we push it in, we do the maintenance. The other way is they fly it into the airfield, they land it. We would take the blades off of it, take the stabilator off of it, it's a big wing on the back. And then we would have to tug it over to the Montag Building. Now, it sounds like a big endeavor, but it's not. It's no different than going in a trailer, it's just a helicopter. There is no way right now to get an aircraft from the airport over to the Montag Building without using Highway 15. So, contacted the Nebraska Department of Transportation, also the State Highway Patrol. It's, they consider it just as a towed vehicle. Even though it's a Blackhawk worth billions of dollars, it's just a towed vehicle. And as long as it's not overweight and oversized, it can be towed on the highway. No, without breaking any regulations. So, if you're thinking about risk and safety, so am I. So, we would obviously tug it when there's not a lot of traffic. Could be time of day. Also, if there's a situation where we did tug it, even if it's a time of day where there's less traffic, we'd still want escort vehicles. You know, I would like it very visible that something is going on. And it's only a quarter mile, so it would only be on that Highway 15 for two to three minutes. You can tug the Blackhawk pretty fast, I've seen it done, so. The other thing, well, and then after maintenance is done, we'd obviously have to tug it back to the airport to do the run-ups and the ground checks on it. Already talked to Ben Benson, he's already gave me a letter. He's okay with me putting in a service road to the Airport Authority driveway. Obviously, the Airport Authority is its own little thing, we'd have to get approval to add into that. They're already aware of it, they're kind of okay with it, but they still have their processes that they have to go through. I would prefer that also, it's safer for me, less risk for the community, less risk for the aircraft. So, also thinking about that. The other additional one that might be, is, it can happen, it's just going to take a longer time because it involves federal government. The other one's through the fence, letter. So, the FAA has, they, they look at any commercial business that's aviation-related, that's not on the airfield. When you read the order, it's 5190, I think, FAA 5190. Basically, in a nutshell, it's a, it's kind of a compete clause. They don't want commercial businesses off the airfield competing against businesses on the airfield because there's an advantage, because things are typically a little bit cheaper, hangar space a little bit more expensive as opposed to a commercial building off the, off the airfield. We're not going to compete with anything on the FBO. We should get that approved through the FAA. As a matter of fact, we'll purchase fuel from the, from the FBO, and we would increase the economic impact for the airport. Uh, let's see here. Other key considerations that I've thought about to environmental standpoint, no significant impact environmentally wise. The consumables that we use are used in, they're a little bit different, but they're no more harmful than any other thing that you would find in a repair shop. Adhesives, oils, that type of thing. Also, noise levels, we're not going to be running up aircraft over there. So, noise levels would be comparable to already businesses that occupy those commercial businesses. Economic impact. So, I'm starting the business, I wanted to have a really great economical impact on the city of Seward. But we'll create local jobs. I've already got two guys, they're willing to come on full-time right now. So, we'd start out with two full-time employees, a couple temporary employees until we get established. And potentially, what I would really like, I really want my business to grow, is actually getting another hangar built on the airfield. So, I've already talked to the Airport Authority with that. There's a plan for that, they, you know, they're planning into the future. That would be awesome, awesome for me, awesome for the city of Seward, I think. So, finally, so why Seward, right? So, why Seward? So, to make this happen is the guys that I would employ, they're all veterans, I've served with all of them. They live in the Seward, in the Lincoln area. And like I said, I've deployed with them, we don't want to go anywhere, we want to stay at home. I did say in the last meeting, obviously, I'm not from Nebraska. You guys might be able to tell that. So, I am from North Carolina, but I've lived in Nebraska for the last 13 years. I grew up in a small town, I'd much prefer to live in Seward than Omaha, but that's a whole different story. But, we want to stay here and we want to stay local. So, that's, that's, that's why I want to be in Seward. And if this business takes off like I think it will, like I know it will, I'll end up moving here as soon as my son graduates high school next year, so. In conclusion, establishing a U860 rotorcraft maintenance hub in Seward will bring economic growth, job opportunities, and community pride centered around the local airport aviation activity. And it all starts tonight with your approval of the zoning change. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm available for any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I don't have a question, mine's more of a comment. You know, it was so complicated.
What's that?
Moving.
Oh, moving the aircraft is not complicated. The regulations for moving it is.
That's what I meant, I meant the regulations that go into all of it, no. I think it's great, and I'm glad you found a workable solution that's in place that works.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And only Blackhawks?
Well, I'd like other rotorcraft also. The U860 is really what we specialize in. But there are other rotorcraft that Whistler Aviation doesn't deal with that I wouldn't mind supplementing the Blackhawks with, yeah.
I mean, I can't believe we didn't have this in the municipal code already.
Blackhawks?
Well, I told, yeah, last week, I was like, it would be cool. So, I, I grew, little town, I grew up in North Carolina, they said they were the center of the Fourth of July celebration.
No, no!
Seward, Seward.
Fighting words!
However, how cool would it be to tug a Blackhawk through the parade? I think that'd be pretty cool.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, so, but I look at things like that.
Do you need maintenance or some type of ride to do that?
I don't think so.
No.
But I don't know what I don't know.
Fourth of July, we'll happily accept that.
So, according to the Nebraska Department of Transportation, it's just a towed vehicle at that point, so.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Please come forward. Jonathan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, I promise a brief. Jonathan Jenk with Seward County Chamber of Development Partnership. I just want to express support for Steve, had the honor to work with him. We tried to find a suitable location, I think this is a really good location for him in proximity to the airport. I just wanted to be clear, Montag Manufacturing is doing great. So, this is not a reflection on them as, as a business. Actually, Anthony had asked us to promote this building because they just have some extra warehouse space, so they're actually using some of it. But this business is a great complement to them. And so, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're not concerned about a, a local business being in trouble. But ultimately, we'd ask the city council for support with this project.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and return to the council for any further discussion.
Move to approve.
Sorry, well, we have an ordinance on this one, so we'd like to introduce the ordinance. Alright, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, Chapter 410, zoning and subdivision, Article 3, Attachment 1 Use Matrix to amend commercial uses, Article 32 Supplemental Use Regulations to amend commercial uses, to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in permanent form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as Ordinance Number 2025-24. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to suspend this actual rule.
I'll move.
The motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cato, Taylor, Tanyas, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Borgan, 7-0.
This is Ordinance Number 2025-24. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? The motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance Number 2025-24 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cato, Taylor, Tanyas, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Borgan, 7-0.
Alright, congratulations and welcome to Seward. Oh, god, yeah. But we're not done?
Nope.
Not yet.
We're not done?
More?
There's more. Surprise! We didn't even more specific now.
Tim!
Alright, great. Fun fact, public hearing, consideration of a special use permit to Kill Devil Aviation, 1253 280th Road, to allow for aviation maintenance and repair in the C2 district. This is the conditional use component?
This is the conditional use permit. Moving forward pertaining to the ordinance that you just approved. So, we laid out, this conditional use permit will actually be granted to Steve personally as opposed to the property. So, if for some reason this venture moves on or doesn't work out, we don't want anybody just coming in and working on stuff without the ability to look at what's going on. So, it would cease to exist if he gives up that business. We did note on there the standard conditions, the four that we spoke about earlier. And he spoke briefly on the access agreement part with the FAA and the through-defense agreement. So, we did add that to the conditional use permit. By approving this conditional use permit, he still cannot go forward until he gets that access agreement. And once we get a copy of that, we will file that with the conditional use permit at the courthouse showing that we have that agreement on file. With that, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. He talked about everything else unless you have more questions for him. Again, recommended 5-0.
Alright, thank you, Tim. Any questions or comments from the council? There's a public hearing, so open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If there's anyone in the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward. I think you're good. Want to snatch victory, oh, what, defeat in the jaws of victory? With that, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing, return to the council. I believe this just, this just requires a simple motion, correct? Would someone like to make a motion?
Some.
Second.
We have a motion for approval in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Cato, Taylor, Tanyas, Colterman, Singleton, Streisand, Borgan, 7-0.
Now, welcome to Seward. I get excited sometimes. Under administrative items, I have number one, presentation of the NPPD 2026 Wholesale Power Contract. Welcome.
We have with us Courtney and Carson. And it sounds like Courtney's going to take the lead on this, so.
Yeah.
We'll let her introduce herself and we'll get started in the discussion. Just a, kind of a brief up of this. This is a process that I think started, I remember a meeting in our library almost, I feel like, two years ago. I mean, this really is a, and it was just me. It's a really long process in preparation of a lot of the things we're going to talk about tonight in the presentation. And so, numerous customer, wholesale customer meetings. They're, they'll talk about the whole committee structure, they'll look at this and everything else. But also, we also have Jared Hoxton here with us tonight, he's our electric superintendent. And as Jared took over in February, I've added him into the process. And so, he attends almost every customer meeting with me along as well. And, and so, it's kind of been a two-handed process to keep track of this. We've talked a few times about this contract negotiation and that process on behalf of us and the other municipalities we've worked with. And so, we're at that point now, and so, we'll turn it over to our friends from NPPD to kind of present this presentation, and then we'll have a conversation. And then, the end of this, the surprise is, is that we have a month or so to work through this and continue to have that back and forth. And then, our hope is, if we're going to enter into this contract by the end of October, we've made that decision. I've also provided the Redline contract to Kelly, and we've reviewed that. And so, you'll be getting all, all the fun stuff for, in your inboxes. Any questions before we get started? Courtney?
Okay, well, thank you, great for that introduction. I really appreciate your participation and Jared's throughout this. Over the last couple of years, we've had a number of conversations, we've had 15 different meetings with a small group of customers, and then monthly updates to all of our wholesale customers throughout this process. But I'll go ahead and go through the presentation, you all should also have a booklet here that provides a lot of additional detail, and I can refer to this as we walk through any questions you might have. But in addition to the Redline contract, we've got a handy sheet in the middle of this that actually outlines all the key terms of the new wholesale power contract, so much easier at-advance look at that wholesale power contract. So, I'm Bernie Allen, I'm Vice President of Customer Service and External Affairs for NPPD, and delighted to have the opportunity to be here with my interesting ally, of course, the account manager for this area, who's worked very closely with you for quite some time. So, why a new wholesale power contract, and why now? We're seeing a tremendous amount of growth, I'm sure Jonathan, Jonathan can attest to that, across the state of Nebraska right now, and a lot of electric load growth that goes along with that. And so, with all of these new loads coming into the state of Nebraska, we used to have significant capacity margin, a lot of headroom to grow into. And we've eaten right into that, and now it's time for us to enter into that build phase once again. In the electric utility industry, we kind of grow in fits and starts. And so, we're in that phase of the process now where we are looking to grow in pretty substantially. So, as we look to do that, it was really important for us to take a look at our wholesale power contract. Just as you guys going out into the bond market to issue municipal bonds, we go to the bond market to finance large investments like this. And this is a significant investment, over a billion dollars for the first phase of it. So, we will be going to the bond market, and the first thing they ask us is, do you have secured revenue streams to pay for the bonds over the next 30 years? Our contract, our existing contract ends in 2035. And so, there's an opportunity now for us to look at a longer-term contract. But rather than just extend the existing contract, we thought this would be a great chance for us to sit down with our customers and talk about what's important to all of you in your relationship with your power provider, and what are some things that we could make even better in this agreement. And so, that was really the subject of those numerous conversations we've had over the past couple of years. So, I'll talk a little bit about some of the generation that we're going to be adding. In addition to new generation, Cooper Nuclear Station, a little over 800 megawatts of nuclear power in Brownville, Nebraska, we are looking to extend its license through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission for another 20 years. And there's about $100 million worth of upgrades to the plant that goes along with that process. So, that's another one of the reasons for a new wholesale power contract now. So, our approach, as Greg described and as I talked about, we started about two years ago, we really wanted to focus a lot on the why. We had a number of one-on-one conversations, went around the state, talked to all of our wholesale customers, really just to listen and learn and understand again, what are the most important things for our wholesale customers? And we heard some key themes that I'll talk about in a moment. And this also framed the guiding principles for us as we worked through the new wholesale power contract. Everything came back to those guiding principles. The next step along the journey, before we ever even dove into a red line of the actual agreement, was to talk about things conceptually. What would we like to accomplish together? What might that look like? And then, once we were able to find consensus around those concepts and ideas, that's when we were able to actually reduce that to legal language and incorporate it to the Redline Network, wholesale power contract. So, those guiding principles that I talked about, first and foremost, everything reviewed through a lens of how the contract impacts all the end-use customers that we serve together. We want to make sure that we can communicate incredibly reliable and affordable and are able to continue to promote economically of Seward and of the entire state of Nebraska. It provides the financial security needed to stabilize the cost of electricity. So, as we bring on these significant new assets and investments, we want to make sure that we're able to smooth any rate increases that would be necessary to bring this on and do that not only over a longer period of time, but also maintain that strong rating that we have from the rating agencies so that we can get the best value in the bond market. Contract length, again, supporting those cycles of building and financing. It'll take about five years to get all of the assets into service. And then, a lot of the bonding goes beyond that period of term, so. Allowing customers to change their relationship. Allowing customers to change their relationship with MPBD as long as others are not disadvantaged. So this is something that we've heard from some customers, asking about flexibility. What if things change in the future? How might that look? And so what we've incorporated into the new contract is actually opportunities for customers, if they so choose, to either cap their purchases from MPBD and look for another power supplier or self-supply, or to exit the wholesale power contract with MPBD, but again, without disadvantaging all the customers who stay by shifting costs on their behalf to everyone else. And so we'll talk about that in a moment. It promotes the unique benefits of an all-public power state, something I think that we're all very proud of and rightly so. We're statewide about 30% less cost than the national average, which saves Nebraska's a little over a billion dollars a year in electric costs. And then a framework that adapts to statutory, regulatory, and technology changes over the course of the future. So what did we hear was important to customers? Reliability first and foremost, and then rate stability and affordability. Not only do we want to have rates be affordable, we don't want them bouncing around a lot. We want the opportunity to be able to smooth rates as we move forward. The flexibility I talked about a bit with capping and the exit, we also have enhanced QLG or qualified local generation provisions in the new agreement. The ability to change the relationship again with the capping and the exit. And then having a voice. So I'll talk a bit about a new customer committee that we're putting into place that would actually sit with our board of directors up to four times a year to be able to share the customer voice directly with the board as they're making critical votes. So over this two-year process, about every aspect of the wholesale power contract was discussed. So the small contract group, we have about 30 wholesale customers participate in some or all of those 15 meetings. Most of them are anywhere from two to four hours in length, where we sought to align with those guiding principles and improve upon the 2016 wholesale power contract to make this wholesale relationship even better. Along the way, we were updating red lines, starting with that 2016 wholesale power contract, and updated those in May, June, and July. And then our board approved us to offer the 2026 wholesale power contract in late July of this year. So we've got those key terms. The term of the agreement, 35 years. The previous two agreements were 20-year agreements. Those were in periods of time where we weren't in a build cycle. The last time that we had significant build out was when we built Joe Gentlemen Station and Cooper Nuclear Station. And at that period of time, we had 35-year agreements in place. And it's actually pretty standard in the industry, the assets that we built, rebuilt for decades of use and financed them over that period of time. We are looking at adding 1,411 megawatts of new generation and again, that 835 megawatts of continued nuclear generation with that license extension. So Princeton Road Station, looking to have in service in 2029. And then we have additional combustion turbines that we're looking to bring online in 2031, 32, and 33 respectively.
Courtney, where's Princeton Road Station at?
Princeton Road is by Sheldon Station, just outside of Hallam.
Okay.
And a lot of that with respect to choosing locations is about transmission access and existing transmission access so that we wouldn't have to wait and go through a lengthy queue process through the Southwest Power Pool. And we've actually proactively already entered an additional 1,400 megawatts into the transmission queue, just planning for the future so that we're prepared when we need additional generation. So getting ahead of the game. So capping purchases, this is a new feature of the 2026 contract. And this came back to customers wanting an opportunity to potentially have more flexibility. We heard from all of our customers, they don't want to leave, but what if there's some new form of generation that they could put in on their own to supply some of their own customers? What if there's some new opportunity they want to take advantage of? And as we build out generation to serve existing loads and those growing loads that are projected, what's most important is to ensure that those loads, again, don't leave and shift costs to those who stay. Capping allows that. With three years notice, the earliest being December 31 of 2035, any customer utility could decide they're going to cap. It's based on a three-year average of their loads over the prior three years. And then we would continue to serve that amount of load for them and anything above and beyond, if they'd either self-supply or look to another power supplier. And then qualifying local generation, we did hear from some customers, they wanted some additional flexibility in how they might utilize the QLG. So what we were able to do without increasing cost shifts tremendously is to provide additional flexibility so that wholesale customers could partner with one another. If there's not an ability to put it within their own service territory, they could partner in putting in someone else's, they could buy someone else's QLG allotment if they weren't going to be utilizing it, thereby increasing their own. So just additional flexibility on the QLG front. And then the customer committee, I spoke about this earlier. This would just enhance the opportunity for customers to share their thoughts directly with our board as our board is making key decisions. So the opportunity to literally sit around the table with the board as they're discussing an item and just before the board is going to vote. And that'll consist initially of 11 members. There's a charter attached to the contract and then the committee can actually vote to change the charter as things go forward, whether they want to increase the membership, change the membership, et cetera. But that would take a vote of the customer committee. And then the early termination provision. So again, if a customer wanted to leave prior to the end of the term of the contract, they could do so, but without shifting the liability incurred on their behalf to others. So there would be an exit fee that would be calculated per the terms of the contract where they could pay to leave the contract early if they so chose and protect everyone who is staying. And then as Greg was mentioning, the goal for you is to sign before October 31st. The reason for that, we've actually got an incentive for customers who sign ahead of October 31st, we have a possibility for a reduction of any exit fee that they would incur. And it's based on whether or not our costs exceed a benchmark. And then it'd be a 5% reduction each year that we exceed that benchmark, up to a 20% offset for an exit fee. So. Okay. And then this is just additional information on the exit fee. It's based on an individual customer's allocated share of the production debt. So whatever the outstanding production debt is at the time that the customer will leave, and it would be calculated on their most recent three-year period. And then this is just the production debt offset. First credit that I mentioned earlier with the October 31st incentive. And then the last two items, there is an opportunity to reopen the contract for good faith negotiations. And this goes back to that guiding principle of wanting a framework that adapts to statutory, regulatory, and technology changes. So as things change in the future, we can anticipate what might happen in the law, statute, regulations, whether it's state or federal, and there might be new technologies, a customer, the customer committee can vote to ask that we reopen the contract for a very specific purpose and to look at potentially making changes and entering into good faith negotiations, or the MPBD board can do the same. But then it would require a supermajority vote of each to actually offer those changes to customers to be adapted into the contract. And then lastly, we've previously had in the contract arbitration for billing disputes. What we've seen particularly with some national litigation over wholesale power contracts is it can tend to be very long, drawn out, and difficult for court system that is not used to very technical business to provide good decisions. And so we looked to include arbitration into this contract so that if we're not able to resolve disputes amongst ourselves, then we would actually have a three-person panel, one person chosen by the customer, one person chosen by MPBD, and then the third would actually be chosen by those two arbiters together. And they would be experts in the field to be able to provide good decisions and in a timely manner. So disputes don't drag on. Okay, I've talked about the early signing incentive. And then we'll go to the next slide. Thank you. The benchmark that's associated with that incentive is the 45th percentile of the Cooperative Finance Corporation survey, what we call ratio 88. It's referenced in our existing 2016 wholesale power contract and then it would be referenced in the 2026 wholesale power contract. As you can see currently, most recently in 2024, we were at the 19th percentile without the PCA credit factoring in the PCA credit, we were at the, just over the 12th percentile for the CFC. Our goal, our board's goal, is to remain before the 25th percentile. This is just a snapshot of the bond debt for new generation going out over the years through 2062, and then how that would be paid down. The longer-term contract, as you can see, will support that debt maturing beyond 2035. And that way, we didn't have to squeeze all that debt service and front-load it before 2035, which would have resulted in rate increases and spikes, which we all wanted to avoid. So this is just a little snapshot of beyond providing wholesale power, all of the other services that we provide for our wholesale customers. And just a summary of what the wholesale power contract is. Basically, it just defines our relationship and provides as much certainty as flexibility is possible. So we're very happy to be your wholesale power partners and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
So when did the concept of longer-term wholesale power contracts first come in?
For this process, very early on in the process. As I mentioned the last time, that we had a really significant build cycle was back in the 70s and early 80s when we were building out Cooper Nuclear Station and Joe Gentlemen Station. And we financed those assets over their life for a couple of reasons. One, because it helps us to smooth the rates. And two, it's more fair for customers because they're paying for assets as they're using them and you don't have folks coming on later who are essentially getting the use of the asset for free and not having to pay for that early on. So yeah.
So on page, on page four where it says 417 out of 530 Nebraska communities get their energy from Nebraska Public Power, are those, are those communities looking at getting back in with, back into the wholesale power contract? I mean, is that going to increase out of that 530 or are more looking at going for other, looking at other options?
Yep. And that 417 out of 530 includes, and I'll show you on page five, we've got 35 municipalities like Seward. And we've got 81 retail communities that take service at retail from MPBD, I live in one of those in North Fork. And then we have all these wholesale power partners that have public powered districts. And within those districts, they serve additional communities. So all told, all together with MPBD at retail, at wholesale directly with municipalities, but then indirectly through our rural public power district and public power district partners that take wholesale power from us, we serve 417 out of the 530. All 35 municipalities that we serve at wholesale will be looking to sign the 2026 wholesale power contract. And each of those 23 public power districts will also be looking at signing the 2026 wholesale power contract.
So that, and this is, this is to be changed, it was signed originally in 2015 or in 2010?
Yeah, went into effect in 2016.
2016. So as far as, are there any, is, in the contract, is the difference between, you know, obviously there's a big shift from coal to natural gas, right, in the generation capacity? So are those, are those energy costs just pass-through and is the volatility just kind of pass-through on the contract?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll still calculate the wholesale power costs the same way. We're not projecting that we'll have significant rate increases. There will be some. We haven't had a rate increase in eight years on the wholesale power side. We've been able to manage those costs and also bring in some revenues from the Southwest Power Pool because we've been a net seller of the pool. But in addition to bringing on that new generation, because we're bringing on new loads, we'll have new revenues coming in from the load side of the equation as well. We don't build speculatively. We don't build out a bunch of really expensive assets in the hopes that someone will come and that we'll have revenues on the back end. Instead, we project out to ensure that what we're building, we will have loads for. And that's, that's what our projections are. So it's showing we will have the revenues on the other side as well from hundreds of megawatts of new load coming online. So shouldn't see, we'll see minimal rate increases over that period of time as we bring on a couple billion dollars worth of assets, but we'll also be seeing new revenues coming in. That's a great question.
Can you quantify, we said minimal rate increases?
Yeah, when we're looking at, we're seeing like 3%, 6% over a period of time, over the six-year rate outlook, I think it's about 15% total, but about 3%.
And the projected new assets for generation, when, when would you expect those to be online?
The first ones we're planning to have online in 2029, summer of 2029. And that'll be Princeton Road Station by Hallam. And then we have three additional CTs, combustion turbines, that we're looking at adding at Beatrice Power Station as we see additional loads come online. Let me just look at page nine, see if they can explain this graph here. What we see here with the blue is our existing resources. The red is what we're building out right now at Princeton Road Station, that'll come online in 2029. The green is short-term capacity purchases that we're making to ensure that we have sufficient headroom for reliability purposes in the interim. And then the purple, and you see three shades of purple, are those three additional combustion turbines that we're slated to come online in 2031, 32, and 33.
In your current queue that you have, what is that generation requirement, not generation requirement, what is the, the, the energy requirement to meet that current queue?
Yeah, great question. And that's what we tried to show in, on page nine also. The purple line is net peak plus step load growth. So this dash purple line that you see kind of in the middle, that is the actual loads that we're projecting. The black line at the top is the loads we're projecting plus the resource adequacy requirements that the Southwest Power Pool has for reliability purposes. plus the resource adequacy requirements that the Southwest Powerful has for reliability purposes. So, you can see that, that top line is what we're looking to meet. And that, and we've got that projected hitting those purple resources in 2036. Did that answer your question?
Well, I'm, I'm just curious, because we, this is such a long contract you're asking us to, to sign, and we're looking at the current queue and what's being currently planned. I assume there will be projects added to that queue as we move forward. And I'm just, I'm wondering, like, will we ever see the end of this contract? Or, is the demand going to outpace at some point the generation? And are we either gonna tell people that are asking for more generation because they have projects they'd like to do? No, you can't do those projects if you don't have the capacity to do them? Or, are you gonna be back with a different thirty-five, or forty, or fifty-year contract, extending it even further? Because, it, to me, it's daunting to ask the government body that, I'm guessing none of us will see the end of this contract, at least not in our current roles. We're binding future councils by, by looking at this. And to me, I think, we have to do some due diligence. I know there's been a process that you've gone around seeking input, but I'm just wondering, realistically, we didn't even get through our last contract, right? Before you were asking us to, to do another contract. And even though the clause says we can go back and reopen this contract and negotiate, the reality is, is more likely it's gonna come from NPPD wanting to revisit the contract before we will, because we, let's be honest, what leverage do we have to come back and say, "We're gonna take our ball and go home, okay? Here are the penalties. You know, we're gonna beat you over the head on the way out the door, and good luck on the market where it's a different market than it was last time." Last time, there's a surplus on the market, and that's why you saw some people leaving and got cheaper energy. Now, those people are probably coming back because they played the game, and now, they're gonna probably come back. And, and I understand for, for the revenue, bond, bonding purposes that you're necessary to have these agreements, but is it really the agreement we think we're signing? Or is, is reality gonna be in ten years or fifteen years? Are we gonna have the demand exceed? Because a lot of the demands now, whether it's AI, whether it's data centers, whether it's crypto mining, I mean, these are huge energy hogs, and they're all going to the cheapest that they can find. I assume that's part of the reason why our energy got gobbled up maybe quicker than anticipated. I don't know that for a fact, but there are those projects out there. And I'm not saying they're not good projects, but from an economic development standpoint, you know, crypto mining is fine, but you're not creating a ton of jobs. There, people aren't spending money in the community. You know, the real advantage to those types of projects is to sell energy.
Yeah, I, so I appreciate what you're saying there, and I come from, and I-